Good evening. Welcome to City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. Ms. Hilbrek, will you please call roll?
Councilwoman Solis?
Here.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
Councilman Lofgren?
Here.
And Mayor Bucknay?
Here.
And Councilman Delagoza will not be joining us this evening.
Great. If everybody will please rise through the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Dr. Young, thank you for running the meeting last time. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And we'll go straight into announcements and reminders or public and employee recognition.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We do have a couple of announcements and some recognitions. I'll start with the announcements. On behalf of the Police and Fire Department, we want to remind the public that their Lunch and Learn is next Wednesday, March 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Victoria Community Center. And residents that are interested can visit and register. Visit for more information and register at victorietx.gov/lunchandlearn. On behalf of the Parks Department, now that the weather's getting a little better, they're increasing and ramping up some of their programming. In light of National Plant a Flower Day on Sunday, March 12th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Children's Park, they're going to have a botanical bash open to kids of all ages. As a spinoff of the Toddlers on the Trail program that was began last year, now they're doing one bilingual program called A Fuera en la Naturaleza. I don't know why I'm stuttering with that. A Fuera de la Naturaleza, which is outside in nature. And so those are typically geared towards one to five-year-olds. And so we encourage those folks to check that program out. Additionally, Exercise Challenge, open to all age groups. This would sound better if you saw it spelled out, but it's Exercise with E-G-G, intentionally starting Thursday, March 9th to Easter Sunday, April 9th, located along the Nature Trail and Riverside Park and the Lone Tree Creek Hike and Bike Trail. And so we encourage the residents to check out the Parks and Recreation website for more information as well. And those are the only couple of announcements that I have. I can transition to recognitions if you like.
Please.
All right. So first off, I want to congratulate and recognize our Finance Department for receiving the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 38th year in a row. This, of course, speaks highly of Gilbert and his leadership with our Finance Department. I won't say that how long he's been here, but he's been a big part of the continuity of success within that department. And every year, we obviously make this recognition because every year we get this budget award. But very briefly, this award represents a significant achievement. It reflects the commitment of the governing body as well, so it's a credit to you as well, and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity has to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity budget serves as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communications device. And budget documents must be rated in the proficient level in all four categories and in 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. And so kudos to our finance team. I know that Laura is here and Wesley is as well. And so kudos to them for all their hard work in ensuring that we have a budget document that meets the highest of standards. So congratulations, y'all. All right. And so the other recognition, we actually have one on the agenda. And this is for the March 2023 Keep Victoria Beautiful Business Beautification Award, which, of course, Kristy Uker typically comes up and presents. And as she walks up, I'll convey that she is now the Assistant Director for Environmental Services. So recently promoted as the new Assistant Director of our Environmental Services. She will continue to oversee our Community Appearance Division and Educational Outreach Initiatives, but will ramp up in assisting Darrell Leesack in some of the other day-to-day operations. And so we're very excited that she continues to work for us. And so thank you so much for that and congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say I am completely honored and very fortunate to be working for the City of Victoria and particular in this department. And you know Darrell needs a lot of help, clearly. We, I am really happy to be in Victoria and I'm hoping to stay a little while, so. Okay, well, let's get to our Keep Victoria Beautiful Beautification Award. And I will introduce Meredith Byrd once again for this award.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And actually, before I get to the award, I just want to say how much I've enjoyed working with Kristy with being associated with KVB. I just, I count her as a friend. I think she does a fantastic job leading our organization. And being affiliated with the city in general, she's just a firecracker with endless energy. And so anyway, I'm so excited to hear about her promotion and I just adore her. And so on to our award. Thank you again for this opportunity that we have as Keep Victoria Beautiful to continue recognizing businesses that embody our mission and our principles. And this month, our award goes to Main Street Animal Hospital and Doctors Travis and Mallory Scharr. This practice was founded in 1991. And if you travel along Main Street, then you have no doubt seen the work that goes into keeping this property, the building, the landscaping, the green space, looking so nice. And Dr. Scharr and his staff are, they're obviously concerned with putting their best foot forward at all times because there's just not a time of year that that Main Street Animal Hospital doesn't look immaculate. And so that being said, on behalf of Keep Victoria Beautiful, I am honored to present Dr. Travis Scharr with the March Beautification Award.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I guess I'm supposed to say a few words, but I'm glad that this picture was taken before the freeze because it doesn't look like that now. Everything's mowed down to the bare minimum. But it's coming back and the roses are blooming again. And everything will be beautiful in another four weeks. I think this is a great, a great organization as far as this. I was telling the ladies, I'm 90% sure I was on a nominating committee for this in the, when it first, in the beginning stages of it. I think it was with the City Chambers when they first started this. And I don't know if it was in the 90s or the early 2000s, I was actually on the nominating committee. And so I'm glad to see that it's still in use. And I want to commend the city, whoever did all the entrances. They look great. And hopefully the pet resort, we're in the process of adding on and we will have beautiful landscape there too. So we're going to keep Main Street looking good. Thank you.
Since we're in the Kristy-themed section right now, I would say that the event that she organized for this weekend was fantastic. It was the cleanup of Queen City. You did a great job. About 200 volunteers came out. Thank you to everyone that did show up and participate in it. I'm sure we'll get a report sometime soon on how much valuables we collected. And, but thank you for doing that. It's well received and the place already looks a lot better.
And on that end, at our next council meeting, we expect to provide a more specific update on the, you know, tonnage of debris and trash and everything picked up. Crews are still actively working the area. And so by the next meeting, Darrell will provide it or Kristy provided a more detailed report.
All right. Thank you. Items from council. We have one listed on there. Does anybody else have any item that they would like to bring up? Nope. All right. Mr. Lofgren.
I put this on there because I think more knowledge and perspectives of the community make the city and the council better at understanding the needs of the citizens of Victoria. So I asked Bethany Castro, she's the Director of United Way, to do a presentation on community needs from a nonprofit standpoint. I think it's good to have a different perspective than we usually get. Thank you, Bethany.
Thank you for having me, sir. All right. First of all, I didn't know that I was basically first, so please give me a little bit of grace. And then two, I have asked for a self-imposed 15-minute timer and hope to keep it under 10 so then we can have some questions at the end. So hello, everyone. My name's Bethany Castro. I'm the Executive Director of United Way of the Crossroads and have met most of you in my time in Victoria. Started to work here in 2018 at Perpetual Help Home and was the Director there. Moved here in 2019 and have loved Victoria ever since. I appreciate your time today and especially want to thank Councilman Lofgren for the invitation. Today, I'm here to give a report on community nonprofits and community needs. Councilman Lofgren and I began talking over a year ago when he reached out asking about homeless individuals in Victoria. Our lunch meeting, which started there, ended up taking about two hours as we dove into deep social service topics where the topic of livability came up. Here, you'll recognize the five core components of the Victoria 2035 Comp Plan, which the City of Victoria has committed to, to achieve livability in our city over the next 12 years. Clearly, the city is ready and taking the lead on setting visionary goals for our community in these areas. But today, I'd like to add in two additional components to those five pieces. We envision a future where the social service sector works alongside the city to ensure all Victorians are able to achieve mental and physical well-being and thrive, not just survive. Today, I'd like to walk you through an overview of the wonderful nonprofits we already have operating in our city, as well as begin to paint a picture of need for everyday Victorians. Here, we've categorized nonprofits in our community into the following areas of focus: education and youth, health, nutrition, wraparound services, housing, homelessness, disaster, and veterans, in order to try and give an overview of who is here doing the social service work. Our office is working on creating a comprehensive list, which includes the organization's description as well as contact information. And I'm more than happy to share that with you guys. And after many rounds of sending this out and asking for edits, we know there's always room for improvement. So if you see something there that is not there, please tell me. Now, if you will, give yourself a minute and imagine a world where these agencies did not exist. If V-Cam was forced to close their doors, no more monthly food boxes or hygiene products for those in need. If MidCoast was forced to cut a program, like drug prevention education in schools, or the Boys and Girls Club didn't exist. Or if Mills and Wheels clients no longer receive their weekly food delivery. My first order of business here today is to highlight our community's hard-working nonprofit organizations, where each agency is working as hard as they can, often on a shoestring budget, asked to do more with less, and having their agency overhead constantly questioned. But they continue to show up every day to serve those in most in need in our community, standing in the gap that holds our community together from behind the scenes. So let's zoom out. Let's take a look at Victoria's nonprofit ecosystem. On a survey I sent out, local nonprofit directors report their clients are interacting with an average of two to three other nonprofit organizations when they come in for services. There's a lot of interconnectedness in our world between our clients. We share clients. But out of necessity, these agencies are absolutely laser-focused on their missions and delivering programs within their lane of service. I've been there. I've been a director of one of these direct service agencies, working directly with clients. And you truly never know where the next knock on your door is going to take you or your attention. Because of this focus on our different and varied clients, there's not always time or ability to zoom out and look for further connection, collaborations, or efficiencies through partnerships or joint grant writing. At United Way, we see our role as convener. Zooming out, focusing on overarching plans, striving for more efficiency, better communication, and partnership among all nonprofits within our region, and asking for a stronger, more proactive partnership with the city moving forward. So now I'm going to switch topics a little bit. We said community nonprofits and then also community needs. So here we go on that subject. I want to introduce you to an idea and a population that we refer to as ALIS in the United Way world. ALIS is an acronym that stands for those who are asset limited, income constrained, but employed. In the past, we might have referred to these individuals as the working poor. We use ALIS as a barometer of community needs. ALIS do not have assets. They can quickly offload for cash, not a vehicle they could go and sell if they come onto hard times, their income is strapped, they're often living paycheck to paycheck, but they're working. They're working in jobs that uphold our community. I often describe this population as being one unexpected expense away from not being able to make ends meet the next month. We're going to take a look at ALIS data by zip code within the city limits on the next slide. But here, we take a look, looking at the most recent data we have available to us. 35% of our city are recognized as ALIS. They're working usually as much as they can, usually more than 40 hours a week, but still not able to make ends meet. When we couple that with the most recent data we have regarding those who live below the federal poverty line, then we look and see that 53% of households are either in poverty or one emergency away from not being able to make ends meet. When I first saw this number in print, I was startled, to say the least. Half of our community are either under the federal poverty line or under the ALIS threshold for survival and are living paycheck to paycheck. Today, I'm here to try and help paint a picture of need in our community. And I think that once we agree on what the picture of need is, we can develop a plan and tackle some root causes of these issues. But as I start to share data, I don't want to lose the perspective that these are real people with real needs right now. When we take a look at just the city of Victoria, this data is broken down by zip code. So we can see that 63% of zip code 77901 are under the ALIS threshold, whereas zip code 77904, 35%, fall into ALIS threshold. So I think their question lingers. What does this mean? If we're looking at numbers, what makes up an ALIS budget? Now, admittedly, you'll see there at the top, this data is dated. And I'll kind of go into that here in a little bit. These are numbers taken from the 2018 American Community Survey, which were compiled and released in 2020. In about a month, the 2020 numbers will be released. So we're always about two to three years behind. On this slide, we're able to see a breakdown of living cost per broad line items associated with different household makeups and what monthly and annual income is needed to produce a survival budget for households in Victoria County. Where you see the hourly wage at the bottom, this is the amount the household needs to bring in per hour to reach these thresholds. One item I'd like to note here as a mother of young children is that a family of four who has kids in childcare, which we can assume means they're in childcare because both parents are working, actually need to bring in $10,000 more than a family that doesn't have children in childcare. The biggest overall takeaway I would like for you to have from this slide is that it is very difficult for a low-wage hourly worker to make ends meet in Victoria. Further, we know that these are 2018 numbers, which unfortunately are the most recent ALIS data we have. But because they're so old, they're nowhere near painting an accurate depiction of our current need. Since then, we faced a pandemic, a freeze, and record inflation where consumer good prices have grown while income has stayed stagnant. The 53% of our population who are under the ALIS threshold has undoubtedly grown and is wobbling on the edge of the cliff not being able to make it now more than ever. And when we discuss the idea of ALIS and the ALIS threshold, I can't disengage it from the idea of livability. To offer an analogy, my home has a peer and beam foundation. If the financial status of our community were a peer and beam foundation, 53% of those peers meant to hold up our house, our community, are shaky at best. When we take a look at children, 46% of children in our area live below the ALIS threshold. So if you'll note, 46% is actually bigger than the overall ALIS number of 35% for our community. So families with children are actually focused more in this arena. These outcomes are directly tied to the financial stability of their household. Those with more than one worker are most likely to live above the ALIS Survival Budget threshold, where those with one worker and just one adult in the household are the most vulnerable. A side note here is that these numbers are pulled from the American Community Survey in 2019 prior to the COVID pandemic. Household work structures and support systems have been absolutely upended since then, with many combining households to make ends meet. We saw an example of this when a household, yes, a household of 16 people became homeless overnight just a month ago when there was a house fire. One issue that leads to these numbers of ALIS households is the stability of jobs they hold. When we look at the type of jobs members of our community work, we can see that 26.9% are salaried employees, while 33% are hourly. Naturally, hourly employees are not paid when they're not physically at work. Sick days or family leave does not exist in an hourly wage job. Often, an hourly wage worker is left to balance the cost of literal income, making it to work with family duties like taking care of a sick child, an elderly parent, or themselves. So how does this compare to the state of Texas? Here, we've provided some comparison data. Our median household income is about $5,000 lower. Our poverty level is about 4% higher. The number of individuals in our community with a bachelor's degree is about 10% lower. And we're on par with the state with the number of individuals under 65 who do not have health insurance. 30% of Texans live under the ALIS Survival Budget threshold, while 35% of Victorians do. This was a last-minute addition. It's often assumed that there is ample, that there is ample help out there for individuals with low income. I wanted to provide some context for that so that we can take a look at the high-end income limits for a few different benefit programs we might be familiar with. There are two things I'd like to note here. First, many benefit programs operate on a sliding scale. So the closer you are to that upper limit noted there, the lower your subsidy or your help is. Second, when we zero in on a family of four, there is a gap that exists between the upper income limits of these benefit programs and the ALIS Survival Budget for a family of four. I would like to commend all of you on your targeted efforts to increase the affordable housing stock over the last few years and the focused effort Dr. Etienne and Keisha Smith are taking alongside many city department heads in the Queen City area. I truly, truly mean it from the depths of my heart that it takes all of us to put the pieces together to move toward greater stability for individuals in our community and our community as a whole. Over half of our community cannot, with certainty, know that they're going to be able to make ends meet next month. A large portion of that 53% are also working. I would like to propose using this as a baseline to gauge ourselves against as we work together to address root causes of these conditions that are within our power to change. We know we can't affect all of it, right? But there are some parts that maybe we can make some move on. The five core components of what you have already adopted in the Victoria 2035 Comp Plan are very important. But I want to challenge us that so too are residents' mental and physical health and their ability to live a sustainable way of life. A very wise woman I worked with at Perpetual Help Home often told our residents, "When you know better, you do better." And so today, our ask, I would like to ask for your participation in a joint task force to strategically tackle social service challenges that lead to such a large number of individuals living under the federal poverty line and the ALIS Survival Threshold. Our goal is to set priority indicators about health and financial stability, to track movement on these indicators over time, and partner to work towards those solutions together. Now we know better, so let's work together to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? I have a few.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Okay. I'll try to make them easy. So 35% ALIS. And ALIS, you had the definitions in that spreadsheet. What I'm trying to understand, wouldn't, you also have an 18% poverty, but wouldn't that 18% already be included in the 35%?
No, sir. When we look at those, we stack them together because ALIS are those who are employed. So those who are under the federal poverty line are not necessarily the ones who are working. They might have some sort of set benefit level on a fixed income. They might not be working. And then the ALIS is stacked on top of that, those who are working. And so we can kind of add those together as kind of, I guess, the lower end of the spectrum as far as income.
No overlap?
To create the 53. To my knowledge, no. That is the way that they report the ALIS data, that federal poverty line is actually separate from the ALIS data and it gets stacked up. And then we look at the remaining piece to make up the 100% of the community. So I would, I definitely want to get you all the ALIS links and we can dig more into that soon. And then an updated report will be released on April 26th with the 2020 numbers.
And then the survival income for two adults?
Yes. Do you want me to go back to that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Here?
Yes. So that is the income, whether it's one or two working.
Right. Yes, sir. It's the hourly wage for the household.
If you're looking at the hourly wage, it could be for two people.
Right.
Combined.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was one of my first questions when I started getting into this was, is that, I mean, are we looking at 2045 per person? That's a lot. So no, sir, it's for the household. Yes, sir.
And then 20% not in the labor force?
Yes. So that is actually folks who cannot be in the labor force. So we're looking at children, you know, they're under the age of being able to work. Whereas unemployed, there would be those who are of age to be in labor force but are not. And then I do want to, this is based on the 2018 ALIS numbers. We know that number is different now as well, sir.
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't have thought that children were included and not in the labor force type of thing.
Teenagers, that sort of thing. Yes, sir.
Well, when you're looking at labor status, they're not even qualified to be laborers, so.
Right.
Excuse the numbers for me then, if you're including those kids in there that...
And, sorry, I did. I'm so nervous. I am so nervous.
I see you at Rotary. Come on.
Also, it would be those who might be like stay-at-home moms, things like that. Like they're just not in the labor force because their family has made that choice to kind of have that support at home. And so it would encompass that. And then also retired or those who actually work but have retired. There would also be a good number of elderly in that not in the labor force that maybe they didn't work, but they hadn't, maybe they were a stay-at-home mom and they were just never in the labor force and now they're older. So.
And then on the community needs, you had all that, that big matrix, right? Job assistance isn't in there.
True. So we did, here, sorry.
So across the top, there's not anything for job assistance?
Okay. And see, I'm telling you, I've sent this out to probably 25 people and nobody ever mentioned that. And so it's always, I want this to be a living document that's going to live on our website that we're constantly updating. I don't, I don't know how to work the pointer, but I think we can all look together at. but I think we can all look together. I had put communities and schools, which is a Golden Crescent workforce program that we fund under education and youth. But you're right, if we kind of expand out, labor force or job opportunities could be a new column, yes, sir.
Yeah, because, you know, getting past this survivability income and Alice and all that is...
It's an upskilling issue.
It's a need, right?
Yeah, yes.
And so hopefully that there's some nonprofits out there helping with job assistance.
Yeah, there's some, there definitely are some. And then I am very excited about a new program that's kind of burgeoning under the Victoria Public Health Department called Bridges Out of Poverty, where it's a 20-week course. Individuals commit to that course. They go once a week for 20 weeks. It actually has a stipend and some kind of incentives that are involved in that as the individuals attend. And it teaches a myriad of skills about how to kind of maybe level up and take yourself to the next level. And I really think that that is a really useful tool that we're going to need to really lock in on here in our community. I'm very glad it's here.
I would add in, as you're looking at that chart, education slash youth. But education isn't just youth. And I mean, Victoria College is lacking from this chart and they do amazing things.
No, I think that would be in our workforce training column. I think that's a wonderful idea, yes, ma'am.
For government into the nonprofit, really. Victoria Colleges.
Okay.
The city's not on there. Sales Tax Development Corporation's not on there. But these are nonprofits that are on there.
Understand.
And we've gone back and forth on where to kind of draw that line because there are so many programs that are part of government agencies that do really good things in the community. And so my ultimate chart is going to have 17 columns. It's all going to be color-coded with different things like that where stuff can sort of live in the middle.
That would be great.
Another thing I don't see on here is the seniors. What is it? I know you have the meal on wheels, but I'm talking about the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission has the aging population in there. And so that would be something that would have to be in here.
Sure, yes, ma'am. Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission is the COG, you know, so the Council of Government. So it's on that weird line of kind of governmental versus nonprofit. And so that's where it kind of, didn't make this list, but I want it to be like an orange on the next one that has that asterisk next to it. But yes, ma'am, you're totally right.
I look forward to your new matrix when you finish.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, my matrix. I don't know if I'll ever be finished, though. Any further questions?
No, thank you for the information, appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lofgren.
Thank you, Bethany. You're welcome.
Do you have any other items from council? Not, we'll close that and go into citizens' communication. Mr. Fisk? Good evening, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, and interested citizens. I have been to many council meetings where individuals have expressed concern over the content of library books. These citizens use their free speech rights to voice their opinions and in many cases, the opinions of their churches in supposed protection of children. I have no intention of trying to revisit the book controversy so everybody can relax. However, an activist, Michael Knowles, spoke to the CPAC Conference over the weekend and made some remarks that I wish to address. He stated, "For the good of society, transgender must be eradicated from public life entirely, the whole preposterous ideology at every level. I am waiting for the outrage from intelligent, caring people of any and all religions. Transgender people are real people. Anyone who advocates for the eradication of 1.6 million people over the age of 13 should be condemned by every church, mosque, temple, synagogue, as well as anyone with a caring heart. The silence on this issue has been deafening. Where is the outrage? We want to protect our children unless they are different. I don't remember that part in any religious text that I have seen. Most religions have love your neighbor as a basic tenet. If a child in your family turns out to have a different sexual identity than what was assigned at birth, do you advocate for their eradication or do you opt to give them the love and support that everyone deserves? We should all ask ourselves, after all the trans people are eradicated, who gets to decide what is next? Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Mr. Von der Rohe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to talk, my name is Michael Von der Rohe. I live at 2204 East North Street. I wanted to talk about vandalism over at TEDECU and Jack-in-the-Box. They keep fixing the fence and the vandals keep destroying it. I got a picture of some of it, but it's been vandalized more since that picture and stuff. And it just is a continuing problem and they don't want to use the crosswalk. That's too much trouble. So it's a lot easier to get a sledgehammer and just knock it down and stuff and cut through it. And TEDECU spent a lot of money redoing the fence. And I wish they could have some motion-activated cameras put so they could nab them. And I wanted to think, Keep Victoria Beautiful. Rick Madrid was mowing all the yards at Christ Kitchen. I don't know if you know that in Queen City. And as far as the last speaker, I would like to see the minimum wage, the federal minimum wage at $7.25 raised for the city of Victoria to $8.25. You know, I think employers have been lowballing workers too long. And I don't know if you know, the minimum of wage for a waiter or waitresses is $2.13 an hour. And that's been like that for a long time. In other countries, you know, it's the regular minimum wage. And, you know, I don't think the customers should have to support their wages. I think the employer should do it. So, you know, I think waiters or waitresses, they should make $7.25 an hour plus tips. You know, the wages are so ridiculously low that even if they spill some water on my lap, I feel sorry for them. I still give them a couple-dollar tip because that's not right, you know. And, you know, a lot of employers, you know, they lowball the salaries. And there's people making $20 bucks an hour that can't survive because the rent's too high or the housing market is too expensive, you know. And the rich pillars of the society, they take advantage of people, you know. And, you know, I would like to see a cap on rent, you know, in Victoria and trailer parks. And they keep raising the rent or the lot fee or whatever and no service, you know, and the pothos, they still, you know, aren't fixed. And he has no intention of fixing them out. Once the excuse this time, Christmas is over, you know, and spring is coming, instead of doing it right, he just puts asphalt down. But I would like to see the minimum wage in Victoria raised at $8.25 an hour and the wages to waitresses and waiters raised, if that's possible, just for Victoria. Because there are some, time has expired. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Von der Rohe. All right, with that, we'll close citizens' communication. And we don't have any items with public hearing, so we'll go into consent agenda. Hilberk, will you help us out?
Item D1 is the adoption amendments to the regular meeting held on February 21st, 2023. Item D2 is an ordinance submitting Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code to increase the credit card surcharge on utility payments made via invoice cloud. And that item is on its second and third reading. Item D3 is a resolution reappointing members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Item D4 is a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract with Asphalt Incorporated LLC doing business as Lone Star Paving for street repairs to Airline Road and Ben Jordan Street intersection for their low quote of $104,250. Item D5 is a resolution rejecting the sole proposal for construction manager at Risk Services for the Public Safety Headquarters. Item D6 is a resolution rejecting all competitive sealed proposals for the Bonner Utility Street Reconstruction Project, specifically for the utilities.
I move we adopt the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. E1.
Item E1 is a resolution adopting the 2022-2028 Victoria Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
Welcome, Mr. McBrier.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This place looks a lot different than the EOC. I kind of like it. So thanks for having me tonight. And thank you for Mayor and some of the council members and also staff that helped us participate in the mitigation action plan revision and update this year. So a quick presentation, then I'll take some questions after that. So what is a mitigation action plan? Hazard mitigation action plan reduces loss of life and property and minimizes impacts of disaster. Basically, we look at those natural disasters that are out there and try to figure out ways we can reduce the impact that it's going to have on us. It begins with the state and tribal and local governments, identify 17 natural hazards. We identify the risk associated to them and develop long-term solutions and strategies to protect our people and the properties related to those. And mitigation plans are kept to break the cycle of disaster damage and reconstruction efforts that go on. So mitigation action history. So it began in the 2000s with the Stafford Act. In 2015, they amended the Stafford Act to allow, disallow regional plans. Our first plan was ever there was associated to the GBRA and was ranged from Kerr County all the way down to us. And so in 2015, FEMA rewrote that plan and the policies made us then go out on our own for a very unique plan that is only associated to the county itself and the partners within. How long is the mitigation action plan for? It's going to be for a five-year cycle. So this cycle is from 2023 to 2028. And a unique note about the lifespan of the cycle of the plan, the data packs that go along with it are only for 20 years. And so in our current mitigation action plan, I requested that the 1998 flood of record be kept in that plan because obviously it's a benchmark for what we do our business when it's associated with the Gallepe River. And so as you read through the plan, the 380-some odd pages of it, that data is now put in there by request from us. So what does the MAP do for us? It's the funding source for all FEMA grants. We can't touch a FEMA grant, city and or county, without identifying within the first couple of checkboxes that we have a hazard mitigation plan that's on file and approved by FEMA. Those are just some of the grants that we picked out to put on there. So, but every time we have a grant that goes out, does not matter what that grant is for, the first thing you ask, is there a mitigation action plan? And is it current? And our answer will be, yes, it will be, so. Addresses hazards, hazards addressed by the MAP. There are 17 natural hazards that are identified. We chose 11 through the planning team. There are some of the ones that we leave off, something like a tsunami, we don't put on there. So the planning team goes in and looks at the data packs associated to the natural hazards. We picked out 11 of those. That's a continuation from the last plan as well. We also identified three man-made hazards that we wanted to place into the plan, which is infectious disease, obviously, something like COVID or pandemic, tech hazard, and also hazardous materials. And those, the information that comes along with those, the data packs are brought in from local data. And so sometimes we don't have national data to back those things up, but we're able to put them in there. And the things we can work towards and put mitigation actions within the plan itself to address those hazards as well. So, but FEMA only requires natural hazards. Planning process, there's four planning processes that started taking place early last year. Obviously, the planning team has put together capability and hazards and risks are associated to it. Goals and objectives, and we look at past mitigation actions that are there and we reidentify if those things were accomplished or what we need to do forward. And then the final one is a planned maintenance and grant funding that goes along with that. And I can talk about that if we need to, so. Who is part of the planning team? Directly, the two partners that are involved in the actual mitigation action plan this time are going to be Victoria County and the city of Victoria. Then we have stakeholders that we consider to be part of the planning effort that are onto the side, from NGOs, profit nonprofits, American Marine Cross, Long Term Recovery Groups, GBRA. They all come to the table and help us identify those hazards and start looking at mitigation actions that go along with it. But the direct two partners that are affiliated to the plan are going to be ourselves and the city of Victoria, so Victoria County. Timeline, we began in April of 2022 with the planning team and kickoff meeting with our affiliated partner, which was H2 out of Austin, who helped us write the plan. They also wrote the plan the previous cycle of it. We then began our conducting a risk assessment in June. And all the way through November, we submitted a draft to TDM. A note here is that the plan is actually approved by the feds already. It made it through FEMA and is now waiting on local adoption, which is what we have the resolution in front of you tonight. And so that is ready to go and no problems there. Mitigation actions, I'll have to lean to the city manager and the staff behind TDM to help me identify some of these. But these are past actions that we had within the plan itself and the past accomplishments that were actually occurred. I highlighted things in red. I know red usually indicates bad, but I wanted to kind of make sure they stood out in my presentation here. So if there's something in red, it shows that it's either going to be completed this year or is on cycle as a planning effort. And so some of the past actions that are in there are going to be the Aqua for Storage Recoveries or ASRs, the wells that were in place. I think there's one set for 2023 and the completion of that. The generators from the previous either past events that have occurred, Hurricane Harvey, all the way down to the most recent with Winter Storm Yuri. The generators are replaced on. And so in 2019, the Raw Water Plant Pump Station, 2020 Public Works Facilities, all the way down the way down to the 2022 mobile generator sets that are available for the lift stations. And I think Ken Gill identified there are 17 or 18 lift stations throughout the city. What's that?
One generator.
Oh, one generator, okay. It's a mobile one for the different lift stations. Everything down from the critical infrastructure key resource hardening, like the EOC for the stairwell enclosure, which hopefully will be done in a couple of weeks, stormwater rehabs that are currently underway, to the stormwater management plans, all the way down to Lone Tree Acres and the Mayfair subdivisions, efforts from the city planning department and also Public Works. And then down to the very bottom, we put a note down here for the home buyouts. Ninety-eight flood to the present, we've got 33 home buyouts that are taking place with nine still slated to go. And I think the county has issued over some of their buyout funds as well, over to the city as well, to help identify some of the homes that are still out there. And not to put me on record, but I think there were six from the county side from the last previous disasters, either 2017, 2015, and on up. So, so those are the mitigation actions, the previous ones. So now updated to the newest ones. And so the plan puts in the previous action items, and then we also update any of those actions items. This year, the planning team decided to work with the contractor to combine all of those actions. And so we don't have to have them separate saying that they're specifically for the city or specifically for the county. It gives us some leverage if there's federal grants that are out there. It gives us an opportunity to look at different ways to secure the funds on a little bit easier route. So what we did is we combined all of those plans or all the mitigation actions, put them into one, which is 47 mitigation actions. And these can be updated at our annual updates. So we'll have an annual update next year in May, April or May timeframe, and we'll look for an annual update. At that time, we didn't get to add any other action items that may be out there. Could be something as simple as a new water well we want to place out in the county for firefighting efforts. It could be something that we want to do with the port. Any of those action items could be implemented at that time, as well as new data packs associated to any type of historic data that we want to update to the plan. If somebody comes along and says, well, what about, we want to put something back in with Hurricane Carla from 1960s, we can do that as well at that time. Most of the time FEMA doesn't have a problem with us adding in the data packs into there. And same thing with the mitigation actions, we can add them in at any point we want to. So I think that was it. That was going to be pretty easy. So the resolution tonight allows me to send that off to FEMA. Once again, the FEMA has already approved the plan and the plan has also been approved at the state level. We're just looking for a local adoption, which the county commissioners did that yesterday. And then we're hoping that we'll have that here tonight as well.
Can you go back to the, I'm sorry, maybe we were saying the same thing. Yes.
The one with the hazards on.
Oh, no, keep going.
Well, well, really quickly on this, I asked Rick to add this slide because I think it's easy oftentimes to just forget all of the great work that the city has spearheaded, you know, since Harvey specifically, on ensuring that we're more resilient. And I think it's a credit to all of you, as well as staff, for doing all these projects. And it's very evident that the bulk of these initiatives that are included in this plan fall on the shoulders of the city because the bulk of the issues happen to be inside city limits just by default.
Absolutely.
And so we're obviously very significantly involved and will continue to be. And so at our workshop in March, we will very specifically get an update on the SCADA design process. We'll specifically get an update on the interconnect project to connect the off-channel reservoirs. And so we're continuously looking at, you know, enhancing technology, become more resilient. And this is just a small snippet of the work that we've done over the last, you know, seven years and will continue to do. And I think it's important for the public to realize that we've learned from, you know, not being prepared in certain situations, that now we're even more prepared. So I just think it's important to send that message out.
And definitely looking for ways to mitigate the effects of the disaster on us. So it's important.
Can you go back to the slide that had the, yeah, can you clarify what a, and give examples of what is and what is not a technological disruption?
Sure. It's going to be a cyber attack, cybersecurity issues. So very much like we had over in Jackson County, or we shouldn't have labeled them out, but Jackson County had actually a breach of their system several years ago. We also have tech hazards associated to that to where it could be just somebody digging a line somewhere and they hit a fiber optic line. And so we identify those tech hazards or the disruptions within that services, identify things that we can do to mitigate those things. Very much like, and I'm going to look over James, so we have a Victoria area network here, that many years ago, the fiber was still up in the air. And there's been a great effort to bury a lot of that fiber because obviously we understand that a wind load upon that network, on that system that's up in the air, could affect our ability to connect to the outside world through the internet. And so throughout the efforts of the Van network, they've been burying that as the years go. And that's inclusive of the city, the county, Victoria College, UHV, a couple of other ones. So we look at those things and say, where are the ways we can mitigate for the disruption of those services upon a natural disaster? And so we put these man-made hazards in there. So if grants become available, we can go after and seek after them.
Another question, are these plans by county?
They are by county. So in 2015, FEMA rewrote the policy in which we could no longer do a regional, so it has to be county only. And so Victoria County holds that. And then what we do is we partner with the partners that we've invested with, which is going to be City of Victoria. In our previous plan, we had actually Victoria Independent School District in there as well, but there have become some nuances with that along the planning efforts. So we decided to make them a stakeholder and just include them in the stakeholder elements of the plan. And so it is at a county level.
Other question, and maybe you don't have the answer to this one. Do you know that the surrounding counties have an emergency plan?
Well, this is a little different than emergency plan. This is a mitigation action plan.
Well, do they have a mitigation?
They do. It's required by FEMA. And so many of them are outdated. Many of them are either in the queue right now to be revised and updated, or many of them have chose not to. And that can affect their ability to fund their projects. And most of the time, we find out that they've just been outdated and FEMA will work with them on bringing that up to speed. But once again, the revision process takes about a year to do.
Is there a way to, is there a website I can go see, like if Jackson County has a current?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I can send it out to the council or I can send it through the city manager, send it to folks. I'm actually on a statewide planning team for that. And so that is updated about the state. And it's actually a pretty impressive map when you see the different color codes they have for all the various entities that are out there. And the state of Texas is currently under review as well, and they're almost in line with Victoria's. So we're kind of leading the pack, so.
So in addition to the MAP, you can send, is there a link for emergency management plans?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Is there a link for emergency management plans as well?
Yes, I can. I can send that to you as well. We have one for the state and we also have ours on the county website. We're actually getting ready to go to.
Not ours, but just if we can look and see what, who else has one?
So.
And who doesn't?
Yes, sir. I can send you a link to it. I will tell you that right now that there's going to be some jurisdictions that are very front with putting in their emergency operations plans out on their websites. And there's going to be some that are going to redact them. There's really no given one answer, but the mitigation action plans, yes, I can send you a link to that.
Thanks.
Rick, would a mitigation action plan include or does it include like nuclear radiation?
Does not. So they don't consider that to be a natural disaster. They consider that to be man-made because it's a nuclear reactor. And so there are some areas in some of the other natural hazards that do pick up some radiological stuff, but no, ma'am, most of those are going to be either in your hazardous utility annexes and or we can identify them in there. But we did not identify one in ours for the actual affiliation to the STP site for mitigation. So we're outside of their EPZ, so we don't feel like we need to, which is emergency protective zone, so. A good question.
What about like issues with the electrical grid? Either from, you know, just occurrences, could be natural, could be otherwise, are those included in these type of plans?
We can dump some of those into the tech world as well, to the tech disruption annex itself within the back of the plan. However, a lot of that data is heavily guarded by the utility industry. And so, yes, we can look at ERCCOT and get some of their information, but we really rely on data packs to drive the things. Even like the hazardous utility annex, I have to reach out to the Victoria Fire Department, County Fire Department to receive their information, to put it in the data pack. And we're really only relying on our records currently here, which are good, but when we're talking about utility disruptions, it's a little bit more difficult process. But I can definitely look back at the plan and maybe something we can add into the tech hazard piece of it later on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there some sort of balance between the need to put a plan out there versus the obvious invasion of the entity's right to not tell the world how they're going to respond to a disaster so that the world can work around it?
So you're kind of blending topics for me, but I love the conversation. So an emergency operations plan is a little different than a mitigation action plan. So for the mitigation action plan to be very front, we do have two versions of it. This is the public version that is here. We actually have the redacted version because of the mitigation action plan associated to this, this specific thing right here is dam failure. We actually have a reservoir to our west that the actual dam itself is in our jurisdiction and not in Goliath's. So we have their complete plan associated to how they would react to any type of dam failure, whether it be a maximum probability flood event that would be a rain event or something of a terroristic event. We actually have that and it's actually in this mitigation action plan as well, but it's been redacted. So back to your question, though, an emergency operations plan is associated to what they do onsite. Let's just use one of our industrial partners to our south. Yes, do we have some of those? Absolutely. Are they redacted as well? Absolutely. There are certain things in there we don't want people to be able to gain access to readily available, especially through my office, so.
But if a council member wanted to come down to your SCIF, they could take a look at it?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for translating my question. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and they've shared before, if you have any interest in seeing the whole plan, I remember I did after Harvey and they shared it with me and got to see everything in there.
Yep. And remember, the plan, the emergency operations plan is just a general guideline. There's some updates to that coming in through the state as well, but like the state, we are always waiting on them for the update. But yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion.
I'll move for adoption of item E1.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on hazard mitigation plan? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. And now we have the Victoria Public Library 2022 Annual Report. Ms. Berger, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. How are y'all tonight?
Good.
Good luck. I'd like to start with our mission. Victoria Public Library, can y'all hear me okay? The Victoria Public Library's mission is to bring people, information, ideas together to enrich lives and build community. I hope this presentation provides you examples of how we do that. Oh, there you go. I would like to start off with our strategic plan wrap-up. This information that I will provide you tonight was supposed to be given to you last year in the fall, but we were unable to find the opportunity and time to give it to you. So my apologies in the delay of strategic plan wrap-up. Our goals for the past plan were create young readers, express creativity, satisfy curiosity, and stimulate imagination. How we were able to create young readers? During the strategic plan, we saw juvenile circulation increase from zero to five years of age increased by 11%. 98% of parents and caregivers surveyed at our programs indicated that the library's services for preschoolers were very good, if not excellent. Express creativity. We were able to increase our technology programs by 34%. Our arts programs, we increased them by 26%. The picture on the top on the right, as you can see, that is one of our signature events, which is our Gingerbread House Workshop. We hosted that last year in December for the 32nd time, as that is one of our most popular programs. The picture at the bottom is Ms. Alex. She is leading storytime. We host four storytimes a week in the library. Satisfy curiosity. We saw an average of 7,000 participants attend our signature events. And what are those events? Those are events that are summer reading program, our Gingerbread House Workshop. And if you haven't seen it online, we have VPL jams, which we have concerts in the library. Those are just a couple to name a few. In the last five years, we've also improved our infrastructure. So our internet speed is fast. Our Wi-Fi signal is strong. So you can see that our community does use us to use our technology and our internet Stimulate imagination. As you can see, we pulled out physical collection versus e-materials. You can see that the community still loves their physical print items and that is a high circulating item. But I wanted to make note that we saw a 30%, 73% increase in our e-fiction materials. So as you can see, that our e-materials are gaining some momentum. And that was the wrap-up of strategic plan. And now we get into annual report 2022. Some of the things I want to highlight during this presentation is our award, some programming, some partnerships that we have, technology, circulation and reservation, and strategic plan and looking forward. As you all know, we did receive the award of achievements of excellence in library awards. What this means to our VPL staff is that we are honored to be recognized for the programs and services that we offer the community. What we're also honored to do is to provide Victoria with a library that is considered one of the best in Texas. Just to highlight of some of the things we did in programming, we hosted 394 programs last year. We welcomed 22,643 participants to these programs. It's no surprise that our youth and family programs are very well attended and we do have high attendance. But I wanted to really recognize that our teen and adult program, programming, we keep adding programs and people keep coming. So our programming area with the teen and adults, they keep growing every year. The numbers get bigger. Some of the partnerships that we are excited about and wanted to highlight was the partnership with Goodwill Industries of South Texas. They called us in 2021 saying that they received a grant to help community members with computer skills and workforce training. They just needed a place to host the program. So we offered our computer lab. In 2021, they started coming every Tuesday to provide that service and training. So we asked them for numbers last year. They told us that they helped 42 individuals with computer skills and to get back in the workforce in Victoria. We're excited about this program in that they told us in December that they were funded for 2023. So we're hoping to see these numbers grow because what we're hearing is that other community partners are now referring people to come to these trainings at the library. Another program that we're excited about is the Mills partnership with the Mills and Wheels of South Texas. We host an in-house program at the Senior Citizen Center during the month, and we have about 40 to 50 participants come to do a craft or whatever the team decides to do that time. But the circulation stat, which is 3,054 items, we were able to deliver with the Mills on Wheel services that are provided. So we have about 25 to 35 members in this system to where they tell us what they want and they get the items delivered to them at their door. And these are people with mobility issues or transportation challenges. So this number right here, we're proud of because that also continues to grow. Our technology, I've already talked about our improvements to infrastructure, but this is a snapshot from last year. We do have 32 public internet computers in the library. We saw that 20,340 people came in to use the computer. We do, we have seen an increase of people owning their own devices, but we do see that they still come in to use our Wi-Fi. Our Wi-Fi is strong and because of the pandemic, we were able to extend our Wi-Fi reach to the parking lot so you can stay in your car and still be able to get on if you need access. And again, that's 20,484 Wi-Fi sessions of last year. What we thought was really interesting was that our print jobs, there were 28,000 print jobs. So what we're seeing is a lot of people probably have data, but they need a place to print out receipts, boarding passes, things like that. So we often see people come in to do a quick print.
Charge per page on that?
It's 10 cents a page for black and white, 25 cents per color. Yes, sir. Aside from the Goodwill Industries of South Texas training, we also help with some quick technology needs, things that you need help on the computer. This is just to highlight that we were able to provide 3,136 people some type of assistance on electronic device. In 2021, we launched a meeting room reservation software because we saw that we were, our meeting rooms were not in use, they were often needed for whether it be an interview, a study room, some type of, some type of other meeting that they would, the community would need. Right here, what we did was we pulled out external use versus internal use. And as you can see, that if our rooms are not used by us, they're used by someone else. So you see that we offered or hosted or reserved the room 1,032 times just last year. With the streamline of this new meeting room reservation software, last year, we saw a 72% increase in just the external usage of our rooms. What we're seeing now and what we're noticing is if the demand continues and this continues to rise, there could be some potential opportunity for a revenue generated program. So if we just, if we continue to see that people are needing to use the room, there could be some potential there. Last year, we wanted to combine physical and digital circulation. That is things that were checked in and out of the library. We saw 304,153 items checked out and we welcomed 1,034,855 people in the door. As you can see by this chart, you can tell when is our most popular time of the year, which is summertime. I was asked this question last year, because I did give the annual report last year, was just about the numbers and circulation and foot traffic pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. And I just wanted to highlight here that we are not at pre-pandemic numbers, but as you can see, we are climbing, we are getting there. And then the physical and digital collection, I did combine it in the previous slide, but I wanted to show right here that the 2019 and 2020, there was a significant increase due to the pandemic. But once our community found our digital collection, they continue to use it and it's growing. And I just wanted to highlight that we launched our overdrive system, our ebook system, in 2011. And in 2011, we were so excited, we had 5,126 checkouts. So we've come a long way since then and we just continue to see growth in that area. And then we'd like to just highlight some of the improvements on the outside. You did hear Benjamin Adrian talk about his Eagle Scouts project and we were so glad that he did that because it really made a difference with the just welcoming people into the door with this great new welcoming setting. At the same time, Building Services was able to facilitate a project with changing the lights on the exterior with LED lighting and pressure wash the building. So we are super excited because we think the building itself looks great on the outside. So we wanted to highlight that. And thank you, Roger and Building Services, for all that they did for that. Last year, we also were, as most of you know, we were in the master planning process. Maureen, it's with 720 Design, she's part of that process, she's the big part of the process. So this is just a timeline of what the work looked like. As you can see, in May, we launched an online survey and we were able to generate 556 online responses. During that same time, she was able to have seven community input sessions. She was able to speak with library administration, library staff, city leadership and stakeholders and gather that information during the master plan process. And as you know, she did present her findings at the city council workshop in September. And we're hoping to see her back in April to present the library's master plan to you all, her recommendations to you all. During this process of master planning, it's a lot like strategic plan in that you do gather community input and data and stakeholder meetings, just kind of the same format. So what we were able to do with this information was look at it and look towards our next strategic plan because our plan ended last year. strategic plan because our plan ended last year. So with that, I'd like to introduce just some of the key areas and priorities that we were able to find with all the data that we were able to get during this master plan process. So for strategic plan priorities for 2023 to 2027, we've recognized that some of the goals that we need to focus on are improve technology and access, foster community awareness and support, inspire personal development and serve as a community anchor. Well, thank you all for your time and I just wanted to take a quick moment to recognize some of our library team that is here. I have a library administration, Debbie Skarupa and Kayla Massey. And then we have the support of our Friends of the Library President and Vice President, Diana Sneed and Diane Boyett. Thank you all for coming. So that concludes the annual report and the strategic plan wrap up and their master planning. I'm here for questions if you have any.
The R2D2 looks very familiar.
That it, those painting nights that we do offer at the library, they tend to be girls' night outs, date nights. Yeah, we don't, I don't know them, but yes, that was an, an adult painting night, Star Wars themed program.
Thank you so much for that. I have a question. How about, we saw overall, you know, foot traffic and pay, do we have a patron number? Like where, where are we at with patrons as far as cardholders maybe?
Cardholders, are we at 34? I think we're at 34, 34,000.
And still about a third of those live outside of the city limits?
Good question.
Correct, yes.
It's about 30.
Yes. And that, and, and we'll run through that very high level executive summary presentation that Maureen will do at our first meeting in April so we can formally adopt that master plan and start, you know, working on that. Strategic plan is not the same as the master plan. Library is one of a handful of departments that go through these strategic planning processes just to help improve the services that they offer. And so this just presented a very unique opportunity to try and leverage some of the same community input and then also develop a strategic plan that can help with the implementation of the master plan. And so more to come, I guess, at the first meeting in April when Maureen is here and we can further discuss that. And during our meetings, I can share more information with you about the strategic plan. Right now, you just saw some of the overarching, I guess, categories, if you will, but there's a lot of information within each that I'll share with you as we work to finalize the strategic plan as well.
Some of these elements, y'all have Texas Zoo come in, I'm guessing with the reptiles?
The reptiles is the educational instructor for the Brackenridge Park. And he is very popular in that we've had to do two programs a year because he brings a lot of his, is it reptiles? And now it's a two, it's a two-part series because once we get past 150 people, we have to wait for the next group. So it's a very popular group, uh, program.
And the.
But talk about the turtles.
Oh, well, our staff member had, has a turtle and a desert turtle. And I don't know if y'all saw, he was the front of the, the newspaper not too long ago. And our staff member had a turtle and she said, I really want people to meet my turtle. And so she brought him and he was, he was great fun. And she had to leave about, well, she didn't leave him outside, but she had to take him outside for a little bit to warm up because if he gets too cold, he doesn't move. So she wanted to make sure he stayed lively. So it was a program that was well received and we had a lot of people attend that program.
And the dancing program, is that your performance?
Ballet vocal, that was one of the performances at our kickoff. Oh, I forgot to say that. At our kickoff this last year, we were able to see 800 people come into the library and we, we invite them, we invite karate, zumba presentations, yoga. We have all different kinds of things to kickoff this summer.
And those are, and the, and those are things that a community members, you know, want to share their experiences and that. And you may recall from Maureen's presentation in September that, you know, the need for more space for things like this, because we do have a lot of community members that, you know, have a specific, you know, skill set that they want to share or, you know, teach, et cetera. And so we are beginning to see just the demand for that. That's a big reason why the reservations are going up as well because more residents, more and more want to just share a skill set that they have. And so the library is a good place for them to reserve a room and to be able to do that.
And what we find is that a lot of times people want to introduce an idea or just share their, share their skills, but they often reach out to us first and we've asked them, we're like, great, yes. And they always say the library is the place where the, you know, if you, if you're, if you go to a, a program, you sometimes you're a little hesitant to go because you don't, you've never been there before, but the library is the first place that people are like, oh yeah, I'll go to the library, I'll check that out. So oftentimes people reach out to us and say, I'd like to share my skill, whatever it is, crocheting, can I host an event?
Chief Lugler?
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to mention this and I'm so glad you said that because Fire Marshal, well, we had our, we had our very first in-person gingerbread house workshop in December and that was our first time back since the pandemic and we hosted it at the Annex. I wanted to thank just all the members, we, we had Victoria Police Department, we had Fire Marshal's Office, we had Environmental Services, we had Parks and Rec, please forgive, oh, and we had our Friends of the Library there to welcome everybody that walked in the door. And please forgive me if I, if I missed any groups, but it was such a fun event because a lot, several city departments came together to welcome people to this and we had Blue Santa and Red Santa. So I want to thank the, all the departments that were helped out to make that program a success.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Excuse me. And next, I'm going to ask James to come up and talk a little bit about a new app that you've probably been hearing about as we've, as we've begun to get the word out about it.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So yes, we are very pleased about rolling this out and just as a brief recap for council and also to our viewers, Mr. Garza, when he first arrived with the city, one of the first things he was quick to identify was that we did not have a citizen engagement portal. And so we started looking for citizen engagement portals. And one of the things we determined off the bat is that none of our work order systems easily integrated with a citizen engagement portal. So then we had to go through and implement a work order system. That work order system has now been online for the last four months and we're pleased to announce that as of today, we are, go live with our new citizen engagement portal that does directly integrate with our work order system. So our app is called Victoria Texas 311. Citizens can either make requests via the web or mobile app service. It is available on iOS and Android service, the Android phones. When I say there's a couple of ways that they can access it, the app on the web by going to victoriatx.gov slash fixit, or if they're used to going to the website and going to the homepage and hitting report a problem, that is now being redirected to now it shows that they need to go and click on C Click Fix to, to do that, do that report. Next up, we've got a great video that Communications created that is launching, showing our app and I want to thank Ashley and her team for putting this together.
It's official. The city now has a new app where residents can request services and stay connected. With the new Victoria TX 311 app, you can report any non-emergency issues that you encounter. With a few simple clicks on your smartphone, you can report sidewalk damages, potholes, streetlight outages, code violations and more. First, download the Victoria TX 311 app onto your smartphone through your phone's app store. When you want to report an issue, use your app to snap a picture of the issue, confirm the location and follow the prompts to submit the request. If this issue has already been reported or is currently being worked on, the app will still notify you. You can even keep up with the progress and the status of the request. You'll be able to see city responses, updates and resolutions to these issues. The handy chat feature also allows you to get more details or ask questions. Excited yet? We are because we're proud of this community and the hard work that our staff does every day to help enhance the livability in Victoria. So now with this new tool, we can better do that together. Download the new app today.
Okay, so it was great, great job. Now, one of the things that I guess was concerned on some citizens is they still want to know whether or not they could report anonymously. We do have a lot of citizens that currently submit posts and they'd like to try to keep their anonymous on there. So they can't do that. So I want to point out there's three, three fields here that are highlighted. The first one, if you're actually putting a description in, the first one shows it can be displayed publicly. So if this is something you want all the other citizens to see that, that will be displayed. If you do not wish anyone to see this, a great example, this may be something within code enforcement or something like that, then you can certainly display and not have it displayed publicly. And then to the right, you can see that you can actually ident, hide your identity from public view. So if you're not wanting people to know that you're reporting this, you can just change that to no and then it would not be visible. The good thing about this is if you do that with our previous system, if you did anonymous, you could never get any kind of updates on the resolution. Here with this app, even though you have hide your identity, you will still receive notifications when it's been resolved. This is what our citizen web view looks like. As you can see, it's a very simple process. You can see the outstanding requests. Those that are highlighted in blue are, have been closed, green are, is open and it's sort of an orange color. It's open, but is in progress. So you can see we've already got some active requests in the system, system right now. So there they can see the outstanding requests, they can comment on a request, they can also follow existing requests. So if they're, see something and they're wanting to report that and they saw it's already there, they can click on it and follow that. And then of course they can create a new request. This is our employee web view. This is what we call our call taker screen. This is what our employees would go in and be able to see all of the requests that are coming in. So as you can see, we're seeing the description. The employees can, up in the right side, they can re-categorize that. If it's in the wrong categorize it, they can assign it, assign due dates, priorities. They can also either subscribe or unsubscribe individuals to that, to that case. I want to draw attention to the lower right-hand side where it says the integration info. You can see that that is integrated with City Works. So it is integrated with our work order system and those updates between City Works and C Click Fix, this app is every 60 minutes is how often it polls. And this is just a very simplified workflow as far as what a citizen should expect as far as receiving emails. The one to the left is actually showing you that the system or the application C Click Fix has seen the email, has recognized it and has assigned it to our agency, the City of Victoria. The middle one is actually when an agent, one of our departments has taken ownership of that with the integration with City Works and automatically assigns it. So that always happens. And then of course, the last one is when the, to the right is when the actual service request is closed. This was a very simplified one. We do anticipate that as the employees are closing these tickets out, that there'll be a lot more comments that are listed in there other than just that the ticket was closed. They'll add in as far as the resolution.
And the resolution is, do they have the ability to post a picture of the resolution?
If they use the app to do that, yes, if it's when C Click Fix, I'd have to see how that would work. I don't think the app, the picture, it's a great point because that would be nice. An example of this was, you know, I was one of the first ones, I actually had a little, you know, it wasn't a pothole, but it was definitely a intention where a certain garbage truck kept driving over it every, every week.
It was a traffic calming device.
We have those on a few roads.
Yeah, so I, I mentioned it several times, a lot of times with, with our, to our director and it didn't seem to happen, but I put a, a request in and the very next day it was, it was, I saw the request, it was closed. It would have been nice to have a picture because when I got to the house, I looked, I was like, oh well, that really looks good. So you did, you did a great job.
It made me think of it when I saw that, that the pothole is repaired, but it has a picture of the pothole.
And it still says the pothole in the middle of the road.
But I don't know, I just didn't know if that was even a possibility.
We can certainly look at and see if that's possible, if we can add that in as a detachment.
Well, even if we don't do the picture, I mean, I've kind of got that same comment all the way through. You keep saying the pothole is in the middle of the road. So basically I'd get a message that says your request has now been closed, there's a pothole in the middle of the road. And I don't think that's the message we're trying to send.
Right. We need to basically, and so this was a very, at the very beginning of this process. And so we just basically worked through that and, and, and so the comments will be a little bit more descriptive as far as what was actually done to, to the work on there. I will remind.
No longer in the middle of the road.
And I will remind the public, please do not stand out in the middle of the road to take a picture. I, I learned that and it was like, that's not good. And of course, obviously, don't try to drive and report a problem or take a picture. So that's all the questions we, we have. I do have a, if you want to see one, I've got a, I've prepared a little short video of how a request is made. It's not as fancy as, as Communications, but it is a real quick one if you want to see that one.
Yeah, I want to see the comparison of videos.
Just a real quick.
Yeah, no music, no nothing.
No, nothing, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to hold my cup.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
And the phone.
So a lot of, a lot to scroll through to find. And we'll see if we can shorten that as we go along.
Was that a screenshot of the map that you?
I'm recording as we're going along.
Okay.
And it did take me several attempts and excuse me, I am typing slow, please don't, I mean, that took a while.
There it is, the source of it.
And literally if you can see up, the, the time is up there. So it's less than a minute for me to, that it took me to actually create this request. And there's the bottle.
One thing that I want to make sure too, we reiterate is that this isn't the only way that someone can report an issue, right? Well, you know, you can still call Public Works or the City Manager's Office, you know, or one of you, right? Or one of you. And so we're definitely not trying to send the message that, you know, everything is shifting just to the app, right? We recognize that we have residents that, you know, don't have access to smartphone or might have difficulties, you know, going through this whole process. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that there's still some options, but hopefully doing it this way will provide, you know, an option for a whole slew of new maybe residents that maybe beforehand didn't know what the process was to submit a work order. And this way, we, you know, just provide a more advanced, modern way to do it. This also will help us, keep us honest as well, right? Because now with this tool, we can help track how long it takes us to close these things out. And so this also helps us stay accountable for our responsiveness level to residents' concerns. And so it's a, it's, it's neat in that regard as well.
Is it always going to say issues fixed all time?
Yes, we will see that. We want to see that number grow. So we're currently at 15 right now.
Currently at 15.
15 right now that we're growing. So that would always be, hopefully it will continue to grow off of there.
We wouldn't reset it every year?
I guess I can look and see if we could do that.
I don't, I don't know. I just.
It's, it's certainly something to look at and see.
It's like likes on Instagram, you know, when we get to 100,000, you know, we'll take pictures with balloons that say 100,000 or 10,000.
That's a good point, Dave.
Mr. Garza did make a great point as far as metrics. And so I will say, I didn't mention those there, but we do have the ability to create SLAs. And so if we want to establish days as far as how long we're going to say we're going to resolve an issue, we could track those SLAs also. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We've reported, I've reported potholes in the past on the city's website. Mr. Garza listed, you know, calling one of us or calling, is, is that still active also?
It's converting to this.
It's converting.
Yeah, so if you go to the website, it'll take you to this platform.
Okay.
Except in website form.
Okay, on the website. Okay, good.
Yes. Yeah, there, there are still certain forums that are still on the website that, for instance, like I think Code Enforcement is one of them that still has those that are in there. But the one where it had the service request has now been moved sort of to the front and it basically is saying right off the bat, just that all requests will go through the C Click Fix app.
Thank you.
You bet. And of course, I would like to point out that there is C Click Fix, which is the app that we're using, but we have opted to use a. which is the app that we're using, but we have opted to use a branded app. And so when citizens or the public goes and searches for the app, they can search for See Click Fix, they can download See Click Fix, it will work. However, we do have the branded app. So if they would search for Victoria 311 or 311 Victoria, you can see the difference between the two apps. So that's an important part to remember. That is everything I have.
I'm excited about this. I think it's going to be a great, great tool. Hope we're not inundated at the beginning. I think as people adopt it, maybe, but more eyes out there helps everybody get everything looking right.
And we'll, and we'll monitor and we'll adjust, you know, accordingly, if we need to shift resources around or whatever else. Obviously, with high vacancy rates, specifically in Public Works, you know, that might be an issue at some, you know, at some point. But we'll manage through it and figure it out.
I've, I've got a question. I was doing great and then I got confused at the very end because you showed us two icons that were different than the Victoria 311. How, how many apps are we talking about here?
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. There's actually only, See Click Fix is a large corporation. They have their native app, which is See Click Fix, and they have their own. But a lot of organizations can opt to brand the app. So what you saw was their app. And the one on the right-hand side was our app, which is the white, if you search for Victoria 311. Either one will work. We would prefer if everyone would use the Victoria 311 because we did spend money for it to brand that.
I mean, for purposes of this, it just, we just need to drive everybody to our branded.
But at the beginning of your presentation, you had a 311 that was red. And is that the same app, but the icon that we're going to look for is Victoria Texas?
The icon on the App Store looks like his last slide.
Okay.
Do you know where it was that you saw the?
It was toward the very beginning.
Sorry, to the very beginning?
Yeah.
That's the beginning.
Okay, I was visualizing something different. Okay, that's helpful then, because it's helpful to know what the icon is that you're looking for. And that's what threw me.
Yes, and ideally, it will. So one of the things is SEO, search engine optimization. So as we have more and more people drive and search for Victoria 311 or 311 Victoria, those numbers go up. As they also download it and click like, we also get to move up on that whole ranking with that whole thing. So please, everyone, download it and everyone, please click five stars.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the city manager reports, correct? We have no work session? Do we have an executive session? Okay, so at this time, 6:31 PM, we will adjourn into executive session. We'll take a five-minute break.
The city council will recess for executive session on the 7th day of March 2023 at 6:31 PM. The subject matter of the executive session is as follows. Texas government code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.